Good morning, this is Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are here today for Council Resolution 21-0024R, informational hearing, Baltimore City Tax Sale. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District and Chair of the Committee. I am joined by Councilwoman Dani McCray, Second District, Member of the Committee; Council Vice President Sharon Middleton, Sixth District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Robert Stokes, Twelfth District, Member of the Committee; and Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Fourteenth District, Sponsor of the Bill. Also joining us on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott is Nina Themless; and on behalf of Council President Nick Mosby is Nikki Thompson. And finally, staff to the committee is Marguerite Curran. In terms of run of show today, what we're going to do, we are going to start out with brief introductory remarks from the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos. And we're going to go through each of the five agency reports. We have reports from the law -- actually, let me take a step back. Who's with us from the Law Department today?
Mr. Chair, Selena Higdon, we brought our expert on tax sale in to help with this matter. It's Mary Keenan.
Okay, before we get to that, Elena, Councilwoman Ramos is going to email you an amendment.
I just did. I just sent it to her.
Okay, perfect.
I saw something I'm through, I haven't looked at yet.
So Elena, if you could kindly for me in the next five minutes, take a look at that for form and legal sufficiency. It literally removes the name of one organization from the recitals in the resolution, or not the recitals, but from who's invited to testify. If you could just take a look at that, because I want to get that amendment passed early and get that taken care of.
I'll look at it right away.
Thank you, Elena, I really appreciate it. So, we have five agency reports to go through. So we'll go through law, DHCD, the Compteur's Office, BSIT, and finance. And then we will get into public testimony. We are going to give the Maryland, I think it's MVLS. We're going to give those folks a little bit longer time to testify, because they worked with the bill sponsor on this. And then we will get into public testimony, followed by questions by the council to the agencies. I left that step out, I apologize, moving a little slow this morning. All right, so with that, that's the run of show. So Councilwoman Ramos, if you could give a brief introductory remarks, and then we'll jump over to agency reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues, for having this hearing right away. I introduced this resolution in February. At that time, we were receiving many emails and many phone calls from people, because they had just received their final bill and legal notice, which comes out February 1st. Which means that was when they were told if they don't pay their property taxes, they could get into tax sale. And so the calls ranged from, they'd already paid, so there was an accounting issue, to, oh my gosh, I can't pay right now. How do we do this? So that was the impetus to go ahead and put this in. As you know, we have, as a council and as electeds, have been working on this particular issue, because the way that we collect our property taxes, not just in Baltimore, but across Maryland, is the predatory tax sale that we have now. Tax lien sales, where the lien can be sold. And then the person who buys the lien goes to the homeowner and gets the amount of the lien, 12% to 18% interest, and a lot of fees. It is predatory. And I am grateful for the leadership of many of all of you on this committee and our colleagues that have worked hard to really work, start the process of reforms. There is motivation and movement now on the tax sale reform issue. Since February, we had lots of activity on this issue. There were lots of people raised a lot of money to get people out of tax sale, this year's tax sale. We're grateful to the mayor and the Department of Finance for taking out homeowners from this year's tax sale and willing to work on reforms. Councilwoman McCray's bill from last session has been implemented, and I'm very excited about protecting several of our seniors with that bill. And the General Assembly passed legislation to create a program that would allow, that would, the state would purchase some of the liens and work directly with the homeowners. So this hearing would be about, you know, how this hearing helps us to prepare for reforms and the conversation around reforms. So I wanted the committee to get a better understanding of how tax sale works, who it impacts in terms of the demographics, of who we're talking about, and what we should do next. So I want to thank all of you for your commitment to this issue. Mr. Chair, thank you for scheduling the hearing and for allowing the time. And all of our agencies today who have prepared their remarks and who are working with us on this issue. And of course, all of the advocates who have been working tirelessly on this issue. I'm excited that we are, as a city, working on a better way to collect our taxes, where people will be able to pay and not lose their home. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let's start off with the Law Department. Your agency report indicates favorable with comments. Starting off, is this approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair, and I reviewed your amendment, and we have no legal issues with the amendment. Depending on how you would like us to proceed, I think Mary has a presentation she can give on tax sale, or we can just be available for questions.
Let me come back to you in one second. I want to recognize Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District, Member of the Committee, who's joined us. Colleagues, you all should have an amendment in your inbox that Councilwoman Ramos sent out earlier this morning. This amendment basically removes the name of the Maryland Legal Volunteer Service from the resolution in terms of the agencies that we're calling in to testify, because they're not a city agency, so technically, we cannot compel them to testify. Is there a motion to move that amendment at this time?
Motion to move the amendment.
Motion by Middleton, is there a second?
Second.
Who's that? Burnett?
Burnett.
Thank you, thank you. Costello is a yes, McCray?
Yeah.
Burnett?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
And Stokes?
Yes.
And I believe we just have Schleifer absent. Okay, all right, amendment's passed, very good. Elena, who do we have from Law Department that had a presentation?
Mary Keenan, who does all of our tax sale work. Probably the most knowledgeable person in the Law Department when it comes to tax sale. So she, I guess, will be available to do, give you information on how the current system works and respond to any questions about how, you know, change, changes would affect, you know, their operations or the city's collection of the process.
Okay, Mary, we can do this one of two ways. If there's a presentation you want to provide now, if we can keep it brief, we can do that. Or you can just be available to answer questions from council members.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a specific presentation available. I'm available for questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, let's jump over to Department of Housing and Community Development. Ms. Murdock?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here today by Mike O'Leary, our Tax Sale Prevention Coordinator, and Joe Kirchner, our Managing Attorney for the Development Division. DHCD stands by our bill report in support of this resolution and supports the intent of the council to examine and improve the process for residents subject to tax sale. I'm going to briefly discuss some of the ways in which DHCD is already working closely with homeowners and across agencies to assist residents facing tax sale and provide some recommendations for improvements. DHCD's Office of Home Ownership and Neighborhood Preservation, Tax Sale Coordination and Prevention Services Program assists homeowners in avoiding tax sale and in understanding the tax sale process by promoting tax sale clinics, conducting community-based information sessions, connecting homeowners with applications for state homeowners and homestead tax credits, and working with community partners to assist homeowners in applying for other types of public assistance. DHCD would recommend the creation of additional ombudsman roles within DHCD and sister agencies like BBMR and the Environmental Control Board to assist residents facing tax sale pay outstanding liens prior to tax sale day. DHCD has also been working closely with the Department of Finance to implement City Council Bill 200593, aimed at protecting legacy and low-income homeowners from tax sale. The recently enacted legislation allows the Director of Finance to withhold from tax sale certain properties that meet specific qualifications. DHCD is working with Finance to assist with the development of the program, and once launched, will assist with the outreach and application review. DHCD recommends that the mayor and city council can continue to include a line item in the annual ordinance of estimates to support the personnel required to carry out this program. An annual appropriation of $500,000 is required to support the processing, review, and certification of applications, as well as the outreach, promotion of the program, and overseeing reporting requirements. Lastly, last year, DHCD introduced a bill allowing for INREM foreclosure of vacant, high-tax lien properties. This legislation will allow DHCD to acquire properties for redevelopment and assemble parcels much more effectively than the current system. INREM only applies to vacant or unoccupied properties where taxes exceed the assessed value. It maintains due process requirements, giving interested parties adequate notice and opportunity to redeem or contest, and it minimizes the wait time related to the current tax sale and certification process. This legislation is in the process of being implemented. DHCD will file three initial pilot cases this summer and has identified 30 additional properties to foreclose on using this new INREM tool. DHCD would have the capacity to increase INREM foreclosure filings with additional attorneys and paralegals. Additionally, if the city had its own title processor, DHCD may be able to expedite the process. DHCD recommends these positions be considered for funding in upcoming budget cycles. Lastly, DHCD understands that keeping low-income homeowners in their homes is a key strategy to preserving affordable housing in our city. The best way to help residents facing tax sale is to assist vulnerable populations, pay their tax bill, and fund programs to keep legacy homeowners in their homes, assist with deferred maintenance and repair, and ensure the transfer of generational wealth. DHCD stands by our bill report in support of this resolution, and myself, Mike O'Leary, and Joe Kirchner stand by to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Compteur's Office, Ms. Kelleher?
Thank you, good morning. My name is Casey Kelleher. I'm the Director of Communications for the Compteur's Office. I'm going to speak on behalf of our Department of Real Estate this morning. I apologize if I don't have all the answers to your questions, but I will get back to you once I check in with Andy Frank, our Acting Director of Real Estate. Excuse me, the Department of Real Estate is here in support of this informational hearing on Baltimore City Tax Sale. For those that know, our Department of Real Estate operate three programs that relate to different, and different ways to Baltimore City Tax Sale. Six months after the Director of Finance holds the annual tax sale, any certificates that were not acquired are referred to the Department of Real Estate to sell to the public. Currently, we're responsible for about 1,300 certificates from the 2020 tax sale. The complete list of these certificates, along with property addresses, owners, liens, and other information, is found on our website. And we will be launching very soon a map where people can also review that information, as well as other properties in our jurisdiction. There are three ways that folks can acquire these tax rel certificates. One is the vendor lien program, which they, the vendor lien program is for developers that want to negotiate a reduction in liens in exchange for a commitment to return the property to productive use, which generally means renovating the property for home ownership or rental. Under the program, the purchaser of the tax sale certificate pays the greater of the assessed value or the sum of the base taxes and water bill. Once the Board of Estimates has approved the lien reduction, these are approved probably every meeting or so, the purchaser is responsible for the process of foreclosing on the right to redemption. There's also a way, a traditional purchase, if you will, where the developer can buy a property available for purchase at the amount of the lien. They don't negotiate anything down. And then developers are also able to acquire any properties that surround the tax rel certificate that are in our jurisdiction. I don't want to read my whole bill report, but I will just also refer to the bottom. We give a little bit more of an explanation on the general and tax sale process for our office. If it reads like lawyer speak, I will be very perfectly honest that Hillary really wrote an opinion for us explaining our role in tax sale about five months ago, and I would be happy to answer any question. But thank you, and I'm here for the whole hearing.
Thank you. Baltimore City Information Technology, I think we have CIO Todd Carter on?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Costello and other members of the committee. The Baltimore City Information Technology Department stands by its report. We're here to provide support, the data, and whatever is necessary to help improve these systems. And that's pretty much what we have.
Outstanding. Department of Finance, looks like we have Director Raymond?
Good morning, Chairman Costello, Vice Chairwoman Middleton, members of the committee and members of the council. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. In our response, we indicated that the city and the Department of Finance holds a tax lien certificate sale normally in May of each year. The tax sale is used to collect delinquent real property taxes and other unpaid charges owed to the city, all of which are liens against real property. Our goal, as it relates to improvements to the tax sale process, include reducing vacant and abandoned properties in the city, protecting vulnerable owners who reside in their properties, and improving the tax sale process in a manner which supports revenue collection. The Finance Department has prepared a formal presentation to provide data and to disaggregate the data by all properties, residential properties, owner-occupied properties, owner-occupied properties, split out by less than or greater than $250,000 assessment, an overview of the fiscal '21, final bill and legal notice data, and the fiscal '21 tax sale results. And the data that we use for disaggregation purposes represents tax sale data from fiscal '18 through '20. So that would be the 2018 sale, the 2019 sale, and the 2020 sale.
Thank you, Director. That concludes all the city agency reports. We're going to go into, why don't we do, is it MVLS or is it MLBS? Am I getting that right?
It's MVLS.
MVLS. Mr. Westry, why don't you provide your testimony? I'm going to ask that you keep it under five minutes, and then we will get into questions from members of the council. Please and thank you.
No problem. And good morning, Chair Costello and members of the committee. My name's Philip Westry. I am a Staff Attorney at Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service. MVLS is the largest pro bono legal service provider in the state. We provide free legal, free civil legal services to those who are facing hardship. I'm going to start off by sharing a little bit of data that we've collected from 2020, from our 2020 tax sale clinics. Of the folks who showed up to the clinic, 72% of those clients were seniors. 48% are disabled. 85% identify as black. And 72% reported household incomes of $30,000 or less. Many of our clients are surviving on fixed incomes. They struggle to pay their bills even when they're not in tax sale. And they also provide housing for more than just themselves. They provide it for their children and oftentimes their grandchildren. We believe that the current system of our tax sale process in Baltimore ultimately strips black families and communities of their homes. And additionally, there are disproportionate effects on folks who are struggling financially. I would like to take a moment to state that we support some of the initiatives that DHCD has mentioned in their testimony, including creating the ombudsman role and expanding it and providing for a strengthened tax sale prevention program. We also are supportive of the recent progress that the city council has made, including the bill that was passed that was led by Congresswoman McCray. In our written testimony that we submitted, we went over a couple of different folks that are dealing with tax sale, including an elderly woman who is from East Baltimore, who was hospitalized and ultimately missed out on completing the homeowner's tax sale, took the homeowner's tax credit and found herself in tax sale. We included a story about a gentleman who had cared for his elderly parents for several years and ultimately found himself in the tax sale process because he failed to open an estate and go through the process of getting the deed put in his name, so that he would then be able to qualify for the homeowner's tax, keep on calling it the homeowner's tax sale credit, the homeowner's tax credit. But I wanted to tell you a little bit more about a client that we've worked with that we call Mr. Robert. He is 62 years old, has a gross household income of $2,700. And he found himself in the tax sale process. It ultimately was determined by one of my colleagues that Mr. Robert should not have been on the tax sale list because he didn't owe property taxes, nor did he have any environmental citations. But he was on the list mainly, well, exclusively for water. This is an error, or a type of error that we've seen that has happened in the process. So what we're ultimately hoping for, and we hope to share as much information about, is those individual stories. Recognizing that it is difficult sometimes for the city to be able to collect those type of individual stories, but we are happy to be a part of this process. But we're also calling for further protections, specifically when it comes to how properties are classified. And it was, it was hard to hear that Finance was interested in separating those owner-occupied properties. But we would also like to bring up the issue of folks who are in properties that they live in, that they may have a direct connection to, that may be legally their own, but for them going through, you know, starting in a state. So we would like to include a conversation about non-owner-occupied properties. And we also believe that there is, there is good reason to move those empty and vacant properties through the current property tax sale list as it's been going. So we implore that the city set up those necessary supports to keep those vulnerable households from facing homelessness. We are, like I said before, here and available to help in any way. And we believe that providing our most vulnerable citizens with a more straightforward and affordable way to pay their taxes, a way that might include allowing for them to break up their tax payments into smaller amounts. We have data that shows that people are more likely to make those repayments of debts, and so that they can ultimately stabilize their community and preserve their homeownership here in Baltimore City. We believe that improvements to the program, sorry, improvements to the process can help clients like Mr. Robert from losing their home to tax sale. And I'd like to thank Mr. Chair and the members of the committee for this opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westry, greatly appreciated. Colleagues, questions? Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you. This question is for DHCD. I know that Mr. Westry from MVLS did talk about tax sale clinics that were conducted. Can you tell me how many tax sale clinics that we conducted, that the city conducted, or maybe in conjunction with MVLS, for 2019 and also 2020? And how many residents actually participated within those clinics?
Yes, thank you, council member. I'm going to defer to Michael O'Leary on this question. I know we work in conjunction with these various organizations to hold the clinics themselves, but Mike may be able to provide more specific answers, or we can circle back on previous years.
Yeah, in 2019, I believe there were five clinics. And in 2020, I'm not sure how many there were. They are, you know, put on by Pro Bono Resources Center and the Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service. And I do promote them throughout the year and leading up to the clinics, which usually occur late March and April. And I attend from time to time. But quite frankly, I do enough training with the staff, with PBRC and MVLS staff, and they are experts at tax sale themselves. So they don't need a lot of my technical assistance. So I'm not as actively engaged in conducting the clinics as you might think. But I do promote them, and I, you know, I'd like to see more of them, frankly.
Just as a follow-up to that question, Ms. O'Leary, the partners that we're working with, have they shared how many residents have participated within the programs, within the clinics during 2019 and 2020?
They share that data. I'm not sure I have it at my fingertips right now. They may have it for you, I don't know if MVLS right now has it. It's, you know, they maybe have 30 people per clinic, and there may be four of them or five a year.
If I may, they are going to testify, so they'll be able to report that data.
Thank you.
That would be great. I'm going to, thank you, Councilwoman Odette. Chair, I'm just going to move on to just one additional question at this time. Within FY, and this is also for DHCD, within FY 2022 budget, our Acting Director Kennedy, Acting Director Kennedy, did talk about two additional positions. That's going to be assistant with the tax sale ombudsman position. Can you share further what their responsibilities are going to be? And I do want to also know, just so we can save a follow-up, I'll just exit here. Will they be providing, will the city be providing tax sale clinics themselves? Or will those two additional positions be assistant with providing tax sale clinics directly from the city as well?
We don't have plans to provide clinics, per se. We do have plans for two social services coordinators to promote tax sale resources throughout the city, such as the property tax credits, the tax sale clinics. throughout the city, such as the property tax credits, the tax sale clinics, my home, my deed, my legacy program, things like that, throughout the city during the year. And for the tax sale exemption program, they will be reviewing and certifying the applications that come in. And once certified, they go to finance, there's a process involved. But their main responsibility in the tax sale exemption program is to review and certify the applications. So that's over a couple of months of time, that's going to be 100% of their work. But the other part of it, most of the rest of the year is going to be, you know, educating the public about what the tax sale process is, how to avoid it, resources available in the timeline, so that they're acting proactively in time to do as much as they can before tax sale.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. So just to clarify, during the time that say we're getting the applications, they'll be handling, mostly they'll be handling applications and processing. But during that downtime where we don't have a huge flow of applications, they will be handling the education and the promotion of the programs that we offer and incentives that we offer. Is that correct?
Correct, and other resources that the state offers, right.
Thank you, Sarah. And Chair, that would conclude my first two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm just going in the order that you're on my screen, Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Could we, and maybe this is for Mr. O'Leary, you referenced the timeline. Could you walk us through it? The, I guess, sort of key dates that occur throughout the year, so we all have a sort of a good understanding. And the reason I'm asking that is, I had a constituent reach out to me for assistance yesterday who got a letter on July 7th. So, which I thought, which just kind of threw me off a little bit because I was like, I thought we've sort of worked through this window already. So I just wasn't, it threw me off a little bit. So if you could just walk us through like what the process looks like throughout the year?
So I'll preface it all by saying, most of my work looks at preventing people from getting into tax sale. There's very little that I can offer people once they're in tax sale. So it's prevention for me. And tax sale happens every May. And the deadline for reducing lien balances below the tax sale eligibility threshold is the last working day in April, which is often April 30th. So I back it out from that. The, I mean, it's a complicated process, but what I try to do is break it down into blocks of time for people to understand. So the first big piece of this is a final bill and legal notice that comes out in early February and lets people know that they have unpaid bills and how to go, what the unpaid bills are and how to go about taking care of them. One thing that isn't immediately clear and often isn't shared in conversations with the Department of Finance, from my understanding, is that there is a $750 eligibility threshold that people should be aware of and should try to get their total amount of bills under, that $750 threshold. So that's not always apparent to people, and that's something I've tried to drive home when I speak with groups. So that's the first thing. People should know that if by the end of the calendar year on December 31st, they have unpaid bills, property taxes, Environmental Control Board bills, which arise from things like, you know, standing water on your property and chipping peeling, flaking paint on the outside of your property and a cracked sidewalk and trash that hasn't been, you know, picked up around your property, that kind of thing. If these things together add up to $750 or more, you may be receiving a final bill and legal notice in early February. And what that is going to tell you is that you need to get these things taken care of by April 30th. The second point in the calendar that I let people know about is in March, in the end of March, the city is going to publicize, used to be the Daily Record in the Baltimore Sun, all the addresses that are eligible for the upcoming tax sale. So that's another way for people to know whether or not the city still believes that their addresses are, their properties are eligible for tax sale. If by the end of March, people still have unpaid bills, the city sends warning letters out in the beginning of April. I say the city, it's the Department of Finance, will send letters out in the beginning of April to the property owners saying, you still have these unpaid bills. And if you don't pay them by the end of April, you, your properties may be going to, they are eligible to go to the annual May tax sale. So people have these points in time, February, March, April, to, you know, to try to take care of things, to try to at least get down below $750. And if they don't, and their properties do go to tax sale in May, then it's very, very hard to provide any new resource that's going to be ready instantly for them to use to take them out of tax sale. I do let people know that the sooner they can address the tax sale issue once they're in, the better because they are being, going to be charged hefty fees. Every few months, once tax sale hits, the state allows $750 in fees, I believe it's six months after, nine months after, and 12% interest on owner occupied properties. So those things out of, and the point is to take care of as soon as possible these outstanding bills.
Director, Director Raymondus.
Yeah, thank you. What Mr. O'Leary has indicated is correct as he's laid out the calendar. What I wanted to do was specifically address Councilman Burnett's inquiry about the individual that received this July letter. What that July letter represents is the Department of Finance informing the owners of those properties of the auction results and their rights to redeem the property. So Councilman Burnett, you were indicating, you know, why did this person get this letter in July? We thought the process was over. Well, the tax sale process occurred in May. In July, we send out official notification to those property owners that actually went into the tax sale. And that letter provides the guidance and communication on what they need to do to redeem the property. So that's an effort that the city and the Department of Finance make to inform the homeowners that they went into and what they need to do to redeem the liens. So I just wanted to add that for a point of clarification.
Thank you. The second question I had was, in the, there's a presentation in the bill file that sort of walks through lien amounts and some of the underlying data around tax sales. The one thing that stood out to me in that was that, I think it's a 34% of the owner occupied properties were legacy homeowners, folks that have been in the house for over 25 years. When we talk about communication strategy, can anyone really speak to how you approach those sort of, that's a pretty significant amount of people who are likely older adults? So how do we, how does our, is there a sort of tailored outreach strategy throughout the year that tries to meet people where they are? And so can you, somebody walk us through, I guess, what that communication looks like, particularly for older adults who may not, you know, be following the play-by-play on social media or on the internet as far as process? How does that work throughout the year?
Well, we are required by law to send notifications out to those owner occupied households who have received final bill and legal notices. We are required to work with the Health Department's Division of Aging and Care Services to send out a separate notification to those folks saying, look, you may be getting this letter from the Department of Finance. It's a final bill and legal notice. This is what it means. All is not lost. It doesn't mean your house is going to be sold. It means you have some unpaid bills and you have until April 30th to pay them. Here are some resources. Here are some numbers to call, that kind of thing. So that's one, one thing. We also, you know, in that partnership with the Division of Aging and Care Services, which also oversee a lot of the senior centers in the city, we also provide them with the resources they need and the training they need to go out and make sure that those senior centers are aware of tax sale and the resources available to people. I go out to some of these senior centers and do the same thing. The HUBS program, Housing Upgrades to Benefit Seniors, I provide the list of all people, 25-year and more owner occupied people who are getting the final bill and legal notices. I provide that list to HUBS. And they take those lists and they give them to their five geographically located hubs around the city to make sure that when their people go out to homes, they can double, they can look and see, they can reference the list and see this person is on a final bill and legal notice list, in danger of going to tax sale. They, I train them. They have the resources that I have to give to people, the tax credits, the tax sale clinics in my home, my deed, my legacy program that MVLS runs. And they are able, when they go door to door with their clients, are able to, you know, further that communication with, one-on-one with their clients. So those are some of the things we do, and that's during the crunch period of, you know, February to April.
Thank you. I did have a couple of follow-ups, but I'll wait for my next one, Mr. Chair, because they're not necessarily pertinent on that line of questions.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you, Councilman Stokes.
I have no question. I'm just listening for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Mr. Chair, I see Vice President Middleton's hand up.
That's weird. I don't see her. I do see her now. Council Vice President Middleton, my sincere apologies, ma'am.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. My question, I guess, kind of piggybacks what Councilman Burnett was, I guess, was really kind of getting to. We have a number, and Mr. O'Leary, I know you are short-staffed and could probably use all the help that you need. We, we have a lot of different agencies that kind of are service-oriented agencies that, and I'm saying this because we have our Community Action Center that helps with a number of things that deal with eviction, BG and EBIT, all things relating to a home, whether it's homeownership or whether it's renting. Somebody comes to those centers for some kind of help. I know you had mentioned something about a social service coordinator. I guess, for clarification, I'm just, you know, there's so many different entities. We need a locate, we need something where the person that has an issue with anything that has to do with a house can just come in one location and get that thing resolved. We're spread out all over, I feel like we're spread out all over the place. And we need a one-stop shop for everything. We need, I know that the CAP centers are in the process of certifying more case managers. Well, what's a case, what's the difference between a case manager and a social service coordinator? We're just like the average resident that owns a home and trying to pay their tax. They don't understand all these different entities. They just want to go to a place, get, try to get help to save their home, save getting their electricity cut off, save. You see what I'm trying to get to? We, we're all over the place, even as council members, we are, you know, we have to kind of search. When we get a resident calling us, we have to look up, take time, try to figure out where do we, where do we direct this person? And sometimes we direct them in the wrong place accidentally because we, you know, we just know it's a general service. So, you know, who can answer that or is, can we create a system for all of this together?
I will say, you put your thumb on it. The social services coordinators are benefit screeners and case managers. In the mode or mold of the LIGHT program that has been working with the Housing Department for years. So when people come in and apply for the program, as they do in our other programs in housing, they will be not only screened for their eligibility for our program, but then they will be screened for other benefits, much as the caseworkers do at the CAP centers. And I failed to mention that when I do go out, I do promote people going to the CAP centers for this, exactly what you're talking about, for this greater benefit screening. But now with a couple of new staff to add to me, I'll be able to do some of that in-house as well. I will say that between the legal advocates and the housing counseling groups and CAP and LIGHT and HUBS, and everybody knows everybody, and there isn't really a wrong door or a wrong telephone number. So there are a lot of different phone numbers people can call, but if they call at least the ones that I promote, everybody knows everybody. And everybody knows that if they can't provide what the caller is calling for, then they know where to send them to get the right service. So it's not perfect, and there are a wide variety of groups doing different things. But there is somewhat of a network and a web that exists.
Thank you. And just, and all that to say, I just want to say this. I, a few years ago, visited California San Diego, and they developed this one-stop-shop, basically a huge building where that person can go into that and get things done within a couple hours of that day. And part of that, part of the problem that I see is that it takes so many days and so much time for it to get one problem resolved, and we are behind. And when I look at some of these other places that I have visited, we are so behind in trying to, as far as timing and helping someone for one problem. It should not take two, three, four hours or sometimes a week or a month. And that's one of the reasons we're caught up in this, this one issue with tax sale. It's such a long, drawn-out problem just to get something, and this happened even before the pandemic. I just wanted to kind of just share that as we're, as we're having this dialogue. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mike, for all the things that you do, because I know you're short-staffed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Schleifer, we've been joined by Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, Fifth District Member of the Committee. Councilman Schleifer, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just before my questions, if you don't mind, Madam Vice President, I introduced a study and report 21-0088 that goes right to your question, to try to understand how we can have an integrated services model where either there's a one-stop, or somebody comes in for BGE help, and then they get assessed for everything that they are eligible for, and then are able to be enrolled. And so we've had some conversations with MOCFS about this, and I'll be talking with Housing about the feasibility, and that was the point of the study and report, so that we can move in that direction that you're asking us. So I just wanted to let you know that, because it, I had the, when I was doing the tax sale work in my district, I have a constituent who forgot to pay her taxes. I mean, she's 90, what do you expect, you know? And, but her, it was clear that the family members she was caring for were getting other services. So why is it that they got services, but then, you know, Grandma didn't get a chance to be assessed at the same time? So it's not just the person, but the whole family would have to be assessed to make sure that she was able to get the homeowner's tax credit. She's totally eligible, she just needs to apply. So, so I'm hoping with this study and report that I introduced that we can start moving in that direction. So thank you very much for, for bringing that up. Mr. Chair, to my questions, I do want to direct the committee to Slide 13 in the Department of Finance's presentation. You'll see that each one of us, the, thanks to the Department of Finance and to the Mayor's Office, we were able to help several people get out of tax sale this year, either through our efforts and fundraising, and you'll hear more about that from other colleagues, or also the mayor taking out so many, you know, 970 people from, from tax sale. What this slide shows is that these liens are still owed. So we want to have a strategy for communicating with those members, and I believe we all got the spreadsheet of who they are, so that, you know, they, we can reach out to them, and that's what we'll be doing in my district, to make sure that they apply for the homeowner's tax credit. Because I bet half of them, we could wipe their debt away, if not more, if they apply for the homeowner's tax credit, which is retroactive for people who are 70 and older. But regarding that slide, my question is to, I guess, to DHD and also to Finance, is there a strategy that you're putting in place to reach out to these homeowners that were taken out of tax sale, to work with them on paying their liens? I also see Deputy City Administrator Ramos here, so I think that might go to him as well. What is the strategy there to reach out to these? We'll be doing our part, but wanted to also make sure that we're lockstep in what you're planning on doing with these homeowners who were pulled out of the tax sale this year, but still owe.
Councilwoman Ramos, this is, I'm sorry, Daniel.
Go ahead, Henry.
Yeah. We will be sending written communication to those homeowners indicating what the present status is, that the bills are outstanding.
We'll also be, we're also in the process of develop, reviewing all of our federal funding sources that we've gone as part of the CARES Act, to see if there are ones that are, that can be eligible. Like you and I have discussed, we, we know we need to do something for, for not just this population, but also the population that has been through tax sale multiple times and is, is on our books. The unfortunate truth is that many of these properties are safe from the being, the liens being purchased by private investors, because the liens are so high, so any sort of, of abatement needs to be in coordination with the ability to, to pay that, that court property tax bill, which is, which by state law, we are forced to, we're forced to take them to tax sale after four years.
And then, thank you, I, I, we've talked a lot about these, our, our folks that we've been working with. What about, in those notices that will be sent to them, will there be information about the homeowner's tax credit, as well as other resources that folks can go to, to try to pay this off?
Yeah, we're looking at, at our own individual processes to see how, if there are ways that we can backdate the things like the home, the targeted homeowner's tax credit and other ones that they're eligible for. Right now, it's, as, as they apply, we can get them enrolled, we're not backdating the credit to, to their prior balances. But we're, we're looking at that, that process internally.
Well, the, the state's homeowner's property tax credit is retroactive for those over 70, so I think that that is something that we can make sure happens. Well, I look forward to, to working with my colleagues and, and all of you on, on this effort, and I think you brought up an interesting point about the amount of the liens and they've been going through. So we'll have to think about that. The other question I had, Mr. Chair, is we are, have been, been a priority to try to address the system itself. I introduced 21-0099, which I believe is going to this committee, which is a study and report about the accounting through the, and the new systems that are needed to, to have a better accounting system and other sort of internal things that we need to address. But what, what are some of the reforms that I think Deputy City Administrator, you've been thinking about, about the, the system itself, to make it, you know, working with our residents to be able to pay? I don't know, anybody doesn't want to pay. It's just a matter of the ability to do so and how we can work through this. I've also introduced 21-0058, which will be the payment plans piece, which goes to this committee as well. But what are some of the other things that you all are thinking about, and putting together a work group, I believe, on this, to, to come up with some reforms?
Sorry, somebody has found my landline and keeps calling me while I'm on this hearing. So we, to answer that, that first part first, or that last part first, the, the mayor has committed to doing a work group, the composition, who is staffing it, the, the scope is still under review, and we're hoping to announce that in the, in the next few weeks. In terms of the systems, we are reviewing, especially in this, in this time when we have an opportunity to invest in the city through the ARP funding, looking to, to scale out, and I'll, I'll let Todd talk a little bit about the, about his efforts, on ways that we can improve our systems, one of which, and the, the main focus of mine is the, is the mainframe, which holds the real property system, which holds many of our payment, payment options, and be able to modern, modernize that so that the system can actually take some of these changes that we're contemplating. So Todd, I'm not sure if you have anything to add in terms of the system review?
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, we- Hey, Todd, Todd, pardon me for one second. After you get done responding to this question, I think this was Councilman Ramos's second question, we're going to jump over to Councilwoman McCray. Thank you. Okay, sure. So Councilwoman Ramos, there are a couple of things we are, we're looking at. One, we're in the midst right now of, of going through the process of selecting a vendor that can give us a flexible payment platform, such that residents can be able to use multiple methods to pay, but also multiple tools to pay, systems, and have that integrated with some of our backend systems. And then secondly, we're working with the Department of Finance to figure out, we actually have a, on a proposal that Director Raymond and I chatted about the other day, to look at our property tax systems and the related property tax systems, so that we can go through and bring them off of the mainframe onto more flexible platforms. That work will be done, will start once we get past the Workday Phase II implementation, but in the interim, we are looking to build a number of, of tools and techniques so that we can technically clean up the work, the technical environment, to clean up the data so that when we are able to start those application replatforming, we're able to bring in much cleaner data into that platform and, and into that new process. So these are, these are active, active initiatives that we are planning right now. One is scheduled to start sooner, which is the payment piece, the actual property tax systems and related property tax systems, those will go, most likely, they, they will start in the second, first, end of the first quarter, second quarter of 2022. And in the interim, we are looking to clean up our data and get ready for those systems, so we're not starting at that time. We've already have a head start on it.
Thank you, that's great news. And you anticipate that this will be ready for not this, you said 20, second quarter 2022? Okay, so that's coming up, great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues, and thank you so much, and I'll keep up for the next question.
Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make a comment, I'm going to try to keep it very short, I don't typically do this. I do want to thank, and I want to highlight our agencies who work together on Council Bill 20-0593. That's going to include our Finance Department, Director Raymond and his team, I see Pedro Ponte on here, and I know you've done some great work on this program. Also want to highlight DHCD, Michael O'Leary, Stephanie in the room, as well as Director Carter with VSIT for the Tax Sale Implementation Program. I want to say that first, and I think it's very important that we highlight it, because Baltimore City, many people may not know, we are the only jurisdiction to lead on this issue and use enabling state legislation to protect our homeowners, our disabled, our elderly, who are many are legacy black homeowners, legacy over 25 years, black homeowners, to protect them and provide some type of vehicle. Now, I started that way in thanking our agencies, and also just want to uplift my colleagues, old and new, as well. But I started that way because, as mentioned within the bill report, we know that tax sales is largely, it's largely governed by our state. It's not largely governed by the local level. My question is maybe for the Law Department, is this Baltimore City have the authority to exclude non-homeowner occupied properties? And non-homeowner occupied properties are going to include vacant properties from the tax sale process?
Councilwoman, I don't believe so, given the enabling legislation that exists at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Westry from MBLS stated that he wanted to look into us excluding non-homeowner occupied properties, and again, I want to stress that this does include vacant properties. Can someone speak to the advantages and disadvantages of excluding those properties from the tax sale? That can be from our Finance Department, that can be from Mr. Westry himself, but can someone speak to that? What are the advantages and disadvantages if we are enabled by the state, which right now we may not be? What are the disadvantages and advantages for excluding those properties?
Councilwoman, I think one of the things that we, that exist in Baltimore City that became apparent a lot when we are in court on tax sale motions and so forth, is that there is a segment of the population that are living in homes that are family homes that, you know, when you talk about the continuation of a family legacy, but the houses are not in their names. So they are not owner occupied. The owners are grandparents, aunts, uncles that have died, and they are unable to transfer it into the heirs' names, because either the city liens are too high, or there are liens from medical facilities, nursing homes and things like that, which they can't pay off. And so that the property is never transferred into the heirs' names, and so all of these programs that we're developing, they're not qualified for because they're not owner occupied. So what I took from MBLS, and, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we need to figure out a way to get to this group of owner occupied properties in everything but name, and that somehow we need to find a way to help them become in ownership and qualified for all, of these programs.
Could I just add something quickly to that? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have jumped in. It's just a very lengthy process, once, once, and I shouldn't speak for MBLS, but once someone enters into the process of trying to get their name underneath to their house, it's not something that can immediately help them avoid tax sale.
Mr. Chair, I just have one follow-up, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there. A lot of these issues are interconnected, as many of my colleagues today have stated. That was from our Vice President, as well as Councilman Burnett and Councilwoman Ramos. What resources do we have? So I don't, I'm sorry to hijack this, but what resources do we have? And I know a portion of it is on the state level, but does the city have any resources for tangled titles, which may be connected to tax sales, but it's a different issue? Do, does the city have any resources for tangled titles right now?
This is Henry Raymond. Presently, the city does not have dedicated resources for the purpose of untangling titles.
And Councilman, might I just add, we, this is, this is on our list of issues that this work group would tackle. This is, in, while there are some legal complications, this is truly, in some ways, just a resource issue, where, where the, the individuals do not have the resources to pay off liens that they have inherited, and there are limitations on how much we can abate. Like, we are not allowed by state law to abate the state's property tax that we collect. So that is an issue that we're looking at, but in, in many ways, this is more pure a just resource issue of finding a way to get those folks enough money to pay off the lien so that the properties can be put in their names.
Director Raymond and everyone, thanks for answering my questions. For Deputy, for Deputy Mayor Ramos, it's good to know that the administration is thinking ahead about these issues, whether it's from a work group or something else. But I want, I want the administration to know that we want them to be very creative and strategic about handling all these issues that are connected to tax sales, but may be different. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
May I comment? Who was that? Philip Westry from MBLS. One, one, one second, I, I want to recognize Deputy City Administrator Daniel Ramos. I apologize for not recognizing you before. Sure, Mr. Westry. Yes, those comments were, were actually, they get to some of the major issues that we have with MBLS. Like, when there's a property where there is a de facto owner, this may be someone who would be in the chain of title, in the chain of succession after someone passes away. This property, for all other intents and purposes, is their property, their, their name is an own deed. And just as Mr. O'Leary mentioned, it does take time, and sometimes it takes several months, or maybe a year or a year plus, to clear this issue up. But we are looking to, to being a partner with the city and being creative, as Councilwoman McCray stated, about helping these homeowners, because we believe that this is the best way to preserve, to preserve that equity, to preserve that wealth that was created, and again, by mostly black families and affecting mostly black communities in Baltimore City. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the, the things that we have continued to deal with, and Councilman Ramos actually held a meeting the other night about was the U.S. Postal Service. Can you speak to how the, both, I guess, issues with United States Postal Service as it relates to sending out communications on time, had an impact on this year's tax sale?
I'll take a stab at this. We have received more complaints than we- We have received more complaints than we normally would on an annual basis as it relates to mail related to the 2021 tax sale as compared to prior years. I think, as we all know, there are issues with the U.S. Postal Service delivery of mail, and those issues have increased over the past year.
And I guess as a quick follow up on that, what, what were, I guess, the nature of those complaints, and how did the, the agency have to adjust its, its work in ensuring that people were able to meet the deadlines? I guess under the assumption that maybe a few of those complaints may have been that I didn't get to notice.
Well, we get those types of complaints every year. What we do is we mail the notifications to the record of address that's on file with the city. In some cases, we may extend deadlines and address it on a case by case basis as we receive the complaints. You know, so in other words, if we've heard from 50 people that they didn't get the letter, we know that something happened with the U.S. mail, so we'll make allowances for it.
My, my second question, so in the, in the report, one of the, so, you know, glad to see that it was acknowledged that there's a disparate impact on black neighborhoods in Baltimore City. Can you speak to the focus of equity on the tax sale work, that the tax sale work will be taking up to address this acknowledgement that communities, of color, black communities in Baltimore City are disparately impacted by the tax sale process overall?
Equity will be a part of the process under review. But I think we have to understand how the process begins. It begins with bills not being paid. That's why on the back end, there's a disproportionate number of liens in certain neighborhoods. It starts with, in certain neighborhoods, those bills that have been issued are not being paid. But yes, to your question, equity will be a part of the tax sale review process.
And Councilman, I'll add, I think the mayor's been very clear that the, the current process is inequitable, and that is why he's charged all of us on this call from the administration side with, with identifying solutions. Mr. Chair, I have a follow up, but I'll hold, because I think I'm having internet problems as well. So I'll wait for my next round on that.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
No questions at this, no questions. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Stokes?
Yeah, real quick. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, we know that even before this pandemic, this has been an issue for black communities in terms of a communication problem. I don't know if this Mr. Raymond or Daniel Ramos, you can answer. What mechanism or what suggestions have y'all put in place so we don't keep having this same conversation over and over and over? I done heard this so many times, and everybody go back and say, we got an equity officer. Well, if you got an equity officer, you ain't got enough staff people, they ain't gonna do nothing. There's just one person. So what, what has the agency done in terms of some recommendations on some things that they figure the system broke down? This should have been something that should have been addressed way before COVID, way before the mail was late. So they had to have some suggestions on looking at the system and see what the breakdown is. So can anybody answer that question about what, when you look at the system, what suggestions, what changes that you already recommend to change so we don't have this breakdown in communication? Because I done heard this, like, for the last five years. Now we got an equity officer, but we still having the same conversation, and the, the breakdown in communication is still the same. So I don't know who could answer that question.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it. In terms of system improvements, I think it would be using technology to have a robust system for being able to do payment plans. Second, to the existing legacy system, or potentially the new system, as Director Carter was indicating, that will allow for consolidated bills, so that you can receive one statement that has all of your outstanding liens. I think, as everyone is aware, all of our systems right now are standalone. We have an environmental citation system, we have a water lien system, a real property system, a separate personal property system. The only time bills get consolidated is on the final bill and legal notice. There needs to be a mechanism through reprogramming or a new system that allows for consolidated billing information on a regular routine basis. I think those items would help improve some of the issues that we've had in the past with residents not being fully aware of all of their outstanding liabilities and obligations.
And Councilman, I, I think I heard a question about what, what we have done. I want to thank Councilwoman McCray for introducing and passing legislation that has given the, us, the administration, more authority on, on who we, how we protect vulnerable residents. We have eliminated the use of tax sale for, for just water bills. We are looking, and for the first time, we've actually been able to get high level data that the BBMR has been able to turn into actionable analysis of how much people owe, when do they owe it, and the legal analysis from law to be able to, to pull out owner occupied properties that have had, have not been in arrears for longer than four years, or only have environmental citations and not property tax, where we're compelled to move them in, in, into tax sale.
So my question is, Mr. Raymond, you said y'all had some things you already put in place. Are they already being implemented? I understand what Councilwoman McCray did, that's a wonderful bill. But I'm talking about right now, you made some suggestions of what y'all have in place now. Is that already implemented? Can we see what that look like? Can we, can I, I don't think my colleagues would know what that look like. Can we see the steps to get to that point, where the issues were, and where, how you took care of the issue, so we don't come back to the same conversation a year later, because we still, nothing has improved?
Yes.
So are there some more steps that we can, this committee and the council can see, or you can, Councilman, Chairman Costello, a request for those, those steps, or can the council people go over and see what those steps look like and how it's processed?
Yes, I think probably the best thing to do is for us to provide a written overview of all the things that have been done. It's important to note that a lot of the tax sale reform goes back to 2012 or 13. We increased the threshold from $250 to $750. We've removed water-only accounts from tax sale. We're now removing things, these are things we have done. We removed homeowners from tax sale that had not been in tax sale before, or as Deputy Administrator Ramos indicated, property owners that have not been in tax sale for the last four years. So yeah, these are things that we've already done, not things that we're talking about. And additionally, the discussion from HCD, what we're doing to move forward with Councilwoman McCray's bill. All of that's underway and is being implemented because it's effective for the 2022 tax sale.
I just want to acknowledge Director Raymond and the, the complete 180 that the Finance Department has done on this issue. It wasn't that long ago that I was in there, and we, and we were opposed to, to changes to the, to the tax sale system and, and water billing. So I just want to acknowledge Director Raymond and the amount of work him and his team have done to make this process more equitable and to protect our most vulnerable residents.
Mr. Chair, just a follow up. Mr. Raymond, have we looked at the data to show even before COVID, once you made this change, did you see a reduction in tax sales, households going to tax sales? Is that data available? Have you ever compared that data? And I know the COVID case is kind of tough.
I would say, yeah, based, yes. Based on the reform efforts, fewer properties have gone into tax sale, fewer owner occupied properties going into tax sale.
So do you actually have the data, or you haven't really, it's not available, that's what I mean?
No, we, we can summarize it for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Mr. Chair, I'll forego my question so we have time for public testimony.
Thank you. Director Raymond, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to follow up to Councilman Stokes. I don't want to bog the discussion down right now, but for example, based on the PowerPoint presentation that we provided to the council today, on page four, we provide a summary, fiscal 18 to 20, all properties in tax sale. If you look at 18, 19, and 20, you can see each year, the number of properties in tax sale has decreased. So Councilman Stokes' inquiry, based on the reform efforts, the number of properties in tax sale, year over year, are decreasing because of the initiatives that we've put in place.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank, thank you, Costello.
Yes, sir. Colleagues, any other questions before we go into public testimony? Marguerite, how many folks do we have signed up to testify?
Councilman, no one signed up in advance. We will have to go down the list of the attendees. Maybe if you could get the ones who want to say something, to raise their hand first, and we can then use, go through them, and then the call-ins.
Okay. So if you're, if you're on and you, you wish to testify, if you're, if you're on through the WebEx platform, please use the raise hand function. Marguerite, how many call-ins do we have?
Let's see, I think two, two call-ins, and I see about four or five people with their hands raised.
Let's go through each of them. For folks testifying, you will be given two minutes in total for your testimony. Marguerite, please take it away.
Okay.
And, and when you're testifying, please state your name and, and what neighborhood you live in, and what organization, if any, you're affiliated with. Thank you.
Allison Harris, you're unmuted.
Good morning, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today about tax sale. I'm Allison Harris, Director of the Home Preservation Project at the Probono Resource Center of Maryland. I set up and run the tax sale clinics to advise and inform homeowners who are facing tax sale each spring. As Philip from MVLS noted in his testimony, tax sale continues to be an issue that affects our city's most vulnerable citizens. As he noted, the vast majority of our clients are seniors over age 60, have an annual income of below $30,000, and identify as black. The average client in 2021 had lived in his or her home for 28 years, likely developing a significant attachment to both the home and the neighborhood. In addition, nearly three quarters did not have a mortgage. These clients are at risk of losing their home and all of the equity, and for many, the house is the main source of their savings. Our clients' average liens are between $2,000 and $3,000. Most of the clients had missed just one tax bill due to some unforeseen event that happened in their lives last year. My colleagues at our partner legal services organizations will also be testifying today about the systemic problems of tax sale we all see and the necessary long-term reforms. I wanted to share with you some of the problems we saw during the course of this year's tax sale season. The first issue we encountered was the lack of information about those homeowners facing tax sale. Each year in March, PBRC mails a postcard to every homeowner on the tax sale list to let them know about our pro bono legal services, as well as other tax sale prevention services offered by our partner organizations. In years past, we were able to download the full tax sale list with complete mailing information from the bid Baltimore website, but this year, due to a transition in the site hosting the tax sale auction, the list was not available to us. In March, we were fortunate enough to be provided a spreadsheet by Michael O'Leary, which had incomplete address information for the homeowners on the list. I sent that to a mailing house who ran it through a postal database to complete the addresses and send them. However, unlike in years past, hundreds and hundreds of postcards were returned to me as undeliverable. This means hundreds of residents who did not receive information that could have prevented them from ending up in the tax sale. Advocates for the homeowners rely on this list to reach out directly to homeowners to help them save their homes. And I do think the failure of the city to ensure we had access to a complete and proper list didn't amount to a harm to homeowners. The city's new real auction site was made available to us in mid-April. However, the information on homeowners in tax sale was limited to their black and lot numbers, which made determining which homeowners were still in need of our assistance, both before and after the auction, extremely difficult. As for our clients, we saw a few major issues this year. One was data errors. One of our clients had a significant error in her delinquency amount, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, which the city did acknowledge was a data entry error. Another was missing tax credits. A few of our clients did not receive their homeowners' tax credits as they had for many years prior, making their property tax bill unaffordable. There were a few reasons for this, S that received.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, to try and wrap up. You're, you're about a minute and a half over. Please, and thank you.
Oh, sorry, okay. Missing tax credits that were not processed, there was, as was alluded to earlier, mail problems, S that did not get all the credits, title issues, which Philip has also talked about. A lot of people, heirs who have title issues, misclassification, which has also been discussed today, is a huge problem among our clients. People whose homes are not, are not properly classified, and so they can't get their credits. I do want to note, we also serve PG County. We did not have any clients, they'd so few clients, so few people in tax sale this year because they do have payment plans, and encourage people to make partial payments, which we, we know from PG County is very helpful, and I, I hear that's underway, which is great. Thank you so much for your interest in changing the tax sale system to better serve the people of Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Marguerite, who's next?
Dan Ellis? Okay, I'm gonna go to the next person. The next person identified is the last name T R U O N G. You're unmuted. First name, H I E U. Okay, going to the next person. Identified, last name is N N A M D I. Hello? Okay, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Ellis. He just sent me a, an email or text. Dan Ellis?
Me. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I am Dan Ellis. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore and a resident of the Fourth Council District in North Baltimore. I want to-
Thank you very much. I am Dan Ellis. I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore and a resident of the Fourth Council District in North Baltimore. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. In my experiences of twenty years of doing community development work in Baltimore, I've not encountered a system that is more unjust or strips more wealth from minority residents than the tax sale system itself does. There are a number of issues that I'd like to highlight for the committee and several additional ones that have been highlighted by others that I will not touch on due to time. The lack of equity, though, for the system is something that has been highlighted and needs to be re-mentioned. But one important factor for consideration of the committee is that the tax sale system costs the city money. It does this in a number of ways. It keeps properties that are currently vacant, remaining vacant for extended time. One example is, a couple of weeks ago, in conversation with the Comptroller's Office, we're working to acquire properties to develop in West Baltimore, close to Coppin State University. Two properties that we have interest in investing in, in the short term, in conjunction with some other properties that we're acquiring for homeownership. We were told that because the properties went through the 2019 tax sale, the certificates have expired, are not eligible for acquisition, requiring us to wait until the next tax sale in 2022 to occur, wait six months until they get transferred to the to the Comptroller's Office, at which point we can begin to acquire the properties, delaying the entire redevelopment process by at least eighteen months, to begin an eighteen to twenty-four month of foreclosing on the property through tax sale. These are properties with with extensive liens that otherwise, without going through this process, are not going to be acquirable for redevelopment. Additionally, the city retains the worst quality debt. There's typically a hundred and fifty million or more dollars of debt that goes to the tax sale each year, and only about fifteen to twenty million that is acquired, leaving the remaining eighty percent of typically the poorest quality debt in the city's hands. And the city is releasing that debt without collecting any of the fees or interest that is being paid. It's all going to private investors. There are six thousand properties in the city that are vacant, that are cycling through the tax sale every year, similar to the ones that I mentioned, which creates barriers to redevelopment, it delays possible redevelopment, and this ultimately costs the city money, it impacts our communities, and prevents comprehensive redevelopment. What we need is comprehensive reform of the system. We have worked with with Director Raymond and the city over many years on many issues and have appreciated the incremental approach to improve the system. But a new system is needed that is designed to bring equity, that treats residents with dignity, and promotes assistance that is available to them, that returns vacant properties to productive use well and quickly, and helps helps neighborhoods to benefit from that redevelopment. We look forward to working together with Mayor Scott. We appreciate his leadership in recognizing the need for change under the leadership of Daniel Ramos and looking to work with Director Ramos and his team to identify ways for comprehensive reform. Thank you for your time, your interest in the issue, and we look forward to working together with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Marguerite, who's next?
Last name is T R U O N G, you're unmuted. Mr. Chair, this person sent me a text. I believe he's having technical difficulties because his microphone is unmuted. So I'm letting him know, and I'm gonna go to the next person.
Sounds good.
Next person, last name is N N A M D I.
Can you, can you?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Mika Namby. I live in Upton. I am a co-creator of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund, and I have submitted testimony in writing that is too lengthy for the two minutes, so I encourage everyone that is listening to to read it when it is posted to the record. But I wanted to make three quick points. One is that the issue doesn't start with bills just not being paid. It actually starts with the assessment of property taxes, which tend to be inflated based on research in neighborhoods with predominantly black population. And when you couple that with the history of racism in housing and real property policy, you can see that that is where the issue starts, with the disproportionate impact of property tax assessment. The second note thing that I want to note is that there is, there seems to be an attitude within city government that penalizes people not being able to pay property taxes for any reason, and I've heard it said several times in meetings that people rather just go to tax sale and pay the twelve percent because they are not responsible, which we know to be factually inaccurate. And and also that the city is not telling people, well, I should say, not the city, but people inside of the Bureau of Revenue Collections have not been telling people to get below seven hundred and fifty dollars, below the threshold, so that their property wouldn't go to tax sale. And then the last point that I will make is that there have been, there have been a lot of errors. We had a client that had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar error in their property tax bill that that no one could really explain, other than to say it was a clerical error. We also had a client who who did a post-tax sale foreclosure buyback of their property, and the city, you know, did not hold the tax lien certificate purchaser accountable to making sure that when they did the foreclosure, that they took title to the property, which caused a major issue. And then just even last week, Angela Francis, who was a collaborator of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund and owner of the Harlem Theater, received a tax certificate, received a notice saying that her property, that her certificate was sold when she was told in May that, due to within an assessment appeal and an uncorrected tax bill, that her property or that certificate wouldn't go to tax sale. So there are too many errors still happening, and we hear a lot about incremental change, but the reality of it is tax sale displaces people, predominantly elderly black women, from their homes, and that kills people. We can't afford to keep waiting for incremental change. We need something fundamental, and so that's all I have.
Thank you, Marguerite, who's next?
Okay, just a note, the person who's identified as H I E U T R O U N G, who's having technical difficulties, wanted me to inform you that he has submitted written testimony.
Outstanding. Marguerite, can you please make sure that's disseminated to the committee as well as Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Now, we have two, we have two call-ins. I'm gonna unmute the first caller.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Miriam Winter Kelly, and I hold the mortgage for Mr., Mr., William Harris, 1507 Northgate Avenue.
Ma'am, 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 I'm gonna cut you off right there. If you have a specific issue that you want to discuss, including personal information, address, et cetera.
He went down on, on March the tenth, and he was told of 2020 that they needed a supervisor to take care of his, he went down the following day, and again, he was told they needed a supervisor, and they couldn't address his issues. Then he went, and then they slammed the door shut, and he was given no information on how to take care of his taxes. Finally, he was able to get someone months later, and he was told that he had to pay a certain amount. He took money out of his account, left it in the Dropbox. I'm convinced that the Dropbox checks were held to prevent COVID from attacking the employees. So therefore, if you put in money at the end of the month, and it's not deposited until a week, a week later, it is no longer the adequate amount for that month, so that they no longer will release the money because he still owes additional money because they didn't deposit the check in a timely manner. So he has been fighting with the city and fighting with the tax sale purchaser, even though he's paid off the tax sale purchaser, and he paid off the city.
So, ma'am, what I'm gonna ask you to do, have you reached out to a council member that represents that district?
He has reached out to Odette Ramos.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, so, 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 ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you and/or that individual to connect with Councilwoman Ramos offline, okay?
Mr. Chair, just, just to highlight the issue.
Please, yep, go.
Yeah, so this is an issue where Mr. Harris actually paid the taxes and was still put through tax sale a couple of years ago because of an accounting error, and we're still working through the process because now Mr. Harris has actually paid, you know, significantly more than he probably should have. So I'm glad that Ms. Kelly was on and we need to work through it, but she's been trying to work things through with them as well. So I just wanted to highlight what the the back-end issue was with Mr. Harris. Thank you.
Okay, have a good day, all. Bye.
Thank you. Marguerite, who's next?
Next caller, you're unmuted. Are you there? Mr. Chair, a few others have raised their hand. I'm finished with the call-ins, so I'll go to the other participants. Bree Jones, you're unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon or good morning. My name is Bree Jones, and I'm the founder of Parity Homes, which is an equitable development company that's working to heal historic harms in black neighborhoods that have been redlined and segregated. I'm also one of the founding members of the Stop Oppressive Seizures Fund, or the SOS Fund for short. Our organization, last year, over the last maybe ten or so months, have been able to raise eighty-five thousand dollars from small donors to help get fifty-six vulnerable homeowners out of tax sale in this this recent tax sale that just passed. We, most of the donations that we raised were from neighbors of folks who didn't want their neighbors to go, to go through tax sale and to lose their homes. As much as I, you know, appreciated hearing during today's testimony about some of the various ways we can better get the word out to folks that are going through this process, ultimately, my recommendation would be to eliminate tax sale in its entirety for owner-occupied properties. There should be no reason that homeowners are having their unpaid property taxes purchased by Wall Street at twelve percent. Philadelphia is a great example of a city that's doing this well. They have eliminated tax sale, and instead, they offer homeowners payment plans and opportunities to pay their unpaid debts and installments. I would really welcome and encourage this group to reach out to Philadelphia and reach out to their real estate or finance team to see how they've done it and to see how we can bring that to Baltimore. I'm also betting that they'll be able to quell the argument that tax sale is an evil necessity in order to get people to pay their property taxes. I think that when given a chance to pay in smaller increments, people will pay. The other thing that we need to consider is that elderly black folks in the Black Butterfly oftentimes own their homes free and clear, which means that they don't have a mortgage, which means that they don't have an instrument to escrow their taxes for them, and so they're oftentimes hit with a lump sum payment at the end of the year, which is what catches people off guard. The second thing I'll mention is that vacant buildings, so on the other side of the tax sale and tax lien issue are vacant buildings that act like an open store that prevent communities and neighborhoods from healing. For example, there was an individual who was willing to donate a piece of land that they owned to parity, but upon digging, we realized that they have a one hundred, two thousand dollar unpaid tax debt because, you know, they just haven't been paying their taxes since the nineties. This is a good opportunity for DHCD or the Department of Real Estate to have more efficient processes of moving these properties either through in-rem foreclosure or simply having better or more efficient processes for the vendor lien release program. And so I'd just like to advocate for more funding to the DHCD and the Department of Real Estate to better process vacant buildings that have liens on them so that they can assemble them for good community public use. And I'll also just advocate that we filter the sale and disposition of these liens and these types of properties to organizations that are actually working for equity, that are actually working to heal historic harms and are not simply looking to, you know, flip these properties at the highest profit, which oftentimes leads to gentrification and displacement. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Marguerite, anyone else?
Next caller, I mean, speaker is Shayna Roth, you're unmuted.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Good morning, my name is Shayna Roth Gormley. I'm an attorney at Community Law Center. We are a legal services provider for nonprofit organizations and neighborhood groups in Baltimore and throughout Maryland. I'm also a resident of the Seventh District. I got involved, and Community Law Center got involved, in tax sale work through the issue of vacant properties, which deeply impact our clients, who are neighborhood associations in Baltimore. The impacts of the tax sale system on vacancy in Baltimore are enormous. We all know the harms of vacant properties to the neighborhoods themselves, to neighboring properties, to passersby, the physical and psychological harm that vacant properties cause, the hazardous materials, the the open structures attracting crime and illegal dumping, using city resources, and and not contributing anything back to the tax base of the city. Tax sale contributes to vacancy by, as you heard from so many other advocates on the issue of tax sale and those representing homeowners, it, it, it forecloses on properties, families lose their homes, they lose the equity in their homes that they have built over generations, and now there is a vacant property. Purchasers who are involved in the tax sale process, many of them don't actually intend to actually acquire the properties that they purchase the tax debt for. They intend to collect the debt, the interest, and the fees that come from participating in the certificate process. They may pursue pursue a foreclosure judgment, but once that has been completed, they don't actually file a deed, causing clouded titles, causing homeowners who've been foreclosed on to walk away, and now there is a new vacant property. As it currently exists, tax sale has these third-party purchasers who buy the tax debt in order to collect on it. That isn't an effective strategy for returning vacant properties to productive use. We have seen properties that are so underwater with high liens and low assessed values, so vacant lots assessed at one thousand dollars with lien amounts of over a million dollars. No purchaser is going to dive into into the depths to save those properties. So what we really need is a re-haul of the tax sale system. According to the reforms that have been proposed in the testimony so far, we need a system that protects vulnerable homeowners, that keeps families in their homes, and that appropriately addresses vacant properties with the tools that we have and with new tools to return them to productive use. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Marguerite, before we go to any more public testimony, we're gonna, is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, that was the last speaker.
Oh, that was, excellent. Is there a motion, is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
Motion to move the bill favorably.
Middleton?
Second.
Second, Biden, Burnett. Costello is a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Stokes? Dorsey?
Yeah.
Schleif? Schleifer?
Yes.
Yes.
Stokes? Councilman Stokes? This bill passes six-zero with one absence. This bill will move to second reader at the next meeting of the City Council. We're now in recess. Thank you.